Bowling Green, Warren County Planning Commission in order for our July 21 meeting. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. We have a couple items before we get into our meeting. Mr. Moore, if you, we have a new Commissioner, Mr. Evan Brown. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Warren.
Would you like to administer the oath to Mr. Brown?
If he wants it.
Mr. Brown, are you prepared to take the oath of office?
Yes, sir.
If you would then please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you'll faithfully execute to the best of your ability the Office of Planning Commissioner according to law? And you do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with a deadly weapon within this state, nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying such a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending. So help you God. If that is true, please, Mr. Brown, would you please answer by saying I do?
I do.
Congratulations and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. One other item before we get started tonight. Inda, if you would come up front here just for a minute. Our legal counsel has something he'd like to say.
Chairman Warren and members of the Commission, India Unseld was appointed by the City of Bowling Green, actually, yes. India was appointed by the City of Bowling Green to the Planning Commission in 2019, and she served continuously on the Planning Commission since that time when a move out of county forced her to resign that position. That, though, India nevertheless is a reason for us to thank you for your service to the Planning Commission and to provide this plaque and your nameplate as a memento of your service. And please know how much we appreciate your help with the Planning Commission.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, India. Thank you, Mr. Moore. McKenna, if we would call the roll tonight, please.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, McKenna. In our packets tonight, Commissioners, you have the minutes of our July the 7th meeting. Are there any questions regarding the minutes of that meeting? Hearing none, we call for a motion, please.
Second.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Of state.
Commissioner Sissel.
Of state.
Commissioner Brown.
Of state.
Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Ritchie.
Of state.
Chair Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am.
We now enter into our public hearing. Mr. Moore, if you would swear in our folks for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I request that you order the record for each of tonight's hearing to include all the relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, the Commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and the qualifications for each of the staff witnesses. Finally, I request that you administer the oath to each of those witnesses, please.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all very much. Our next item tonight is, Megan, if you would present our budget, fiscal year 2023 budget, and Commissioners, this was in your packet for your review.
All right, everybody. First of all, I'm going to do our fourth quarter fiscal year 2022, just a real quick wrap-up. And just want to also say that we had a Budget Committee meeting prior to this meeting and reviewed this and next year's budget as well. So I'm going to go over this kind of quick for you guys. The easiest way to tell if we were on par, or if we did what we wanted to do budget-wise last year, is to look at our percentages of the year-to-date percentage of budget. I've got highlighted in yellow on line 23, our total income. We're at 122% for fourth, as of fourth quarter, which is good, over budget in income, always a good thing. We're going to skip on to expenses and go through those line items really quick. Payroll, we're at 98.5%. Less than 100%, which is a good thing. Office, total expenses, we were a little over 100% on that. As pointed out in our Budget Committee meeting, advertising is the key contributor to that overage. NPO expenses, we were about 52%. We just did not do as much travel, and we did not do consulting services as we predicted that we might last year. Contractual services, we were at 85.8%. Travel, we were at half, as talked about in our Budget Meeting with, we thought COVID may have, we may have opened up and done a little bit more traveling last year, but that did not happen. And our Commissioners' expenses, we were at 60%. Brings us to our total expenditures of 95% for last year. And then if you scroll down just a little bit, the only other thing to point out is line number 73, our vehicle and equipment. We had budgeted $35,000 for that. We ended up going over budget by about $5,000. We had thought we could get a vehicle and then a truck topper for $30,000 and then about $5,000, but ended up being about $35,000 for the Explorer that we bought, plus another five for the truck camper. That's it on the fourth quarter. Before I jump over to fiscal year 23, does anybody have questions on that? No. Okay. That leaves us with the carryover amount of $653,000. When we met in April, we had approved the green column that you have on your budget. The only things that I have changed are the items in yellow, which is the carryover amount of 653. Line number 25 for salaries has decreased, and then line 33 has decreased as well by about $16,000. That's due to we lost two employees and then replaced them. So it's just a little bit of a salary change there. If you turn over to the next page on line 35 and 36, I have increased those line items just a little bit. Postage and shipping continues to increase. We've had to, as you guys know, ship your packets out, priority mail. That's increased. And then dues and memberships increased a little bit with that. The only other things that I have changed on the fiscal 23 budget are our reserve accounts at the bottom, and primarily those have changed because our carryover changed. And I put the extra funds that we had into line number 74. That's pretty much all I've got for you guys on the budget. Happy to go into anything in more detail.
Commissioners, any questions for Megan? Megan, as always, you do a great job, and this does call for a motion to approve.
It does.
So if we could have a motion to approve our fiscal 2022-23 budget.
Chair Warren, I make a motion. We approve the 2023 budget.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Of state.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
And Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Motion's approved again. Megan, thank you for all you do. Next item is our subdivision site development plans. They were in your packets, bailed to you. Are there any questions regarding the subdivision and development plan approvals? Hearing none, they will be approved as, or they stand as submitted. Next item is letters of credit and performance bonds. There's two of them, to release the cash bond on Weatherstone Phase 1, the amount of $10,000 from GC Land Development, and release the cash bond for Brownstone Farms in the amount of $10,000 from GTS Properties. Are there any questions? Would call for a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Motion approved. Thank you very much. Rachel, we don't have any old business tonight.
No?
Yes, that's what I thought. Okay. We now enter into our public hearing. Our first item tonight is 2022-12 Flume. The Intermodal Transportation Authority, care of Ronald Bunch, has filed an application for a future land use map amendment on tracts of land containing approximately 300 acres located at Zero Freeport Road from agriculture, low-density residential, and institutional government to industrial. If this motion were to pass, the next item would be 2022-40 Z County. The Intermodal Transportation Authority, care of Ronald Bunch, has filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately 300 acres located at Freeport Road from ag to highway industrial with a general development plan. Ms. Hurt.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in October for the properties you just outlined, located on Freeport Road, containing roughly 300 acres. The current zoning for the properties is agriculture, with a use also being agriculture. The future land use map is split, currently low-density agriculture and institutional governmental, with a request to amend the future land use map to industrial in order to expand the Sorry about that. We're going to jump to page 2 and look at LU 1.1.4, which outlines the procedures to amend the future land use map. And at the bottom of page 2, you'll see some italicized text. That was the information supplied by the applicant to justify amending the future land use map. That is there for your reference. Looking at the site characteristics review on page 3, I'll touch on a few things. The proposed general development plan is shown on the screen. The setbacks will follow the requirements for the HI zone and the ordinance, and also an additional commitment that the applicants have made in development plan condition 8, which requires that no principal building be located within 150 feet of a residential use, and no accessory building shall be located within 100 feet of a residential use. Under transportation infrastructure, the properties currently have frontage on Freeport Road, which is a county-maintained rural local roadway with 50 feet of right-of-way and 16 feet of pavement width. If the Flume Amendment and rezoning applications are approved, the initial point of ingress and egress will be from an extension of Production Avenue. In the event that vehicular access is provided to Freeport Road, the property owner will work with the applicable transportation agency to install any necessary upgrades or improvements to such road as required by the applicable transportation agency. Touching on the natural features, I'll go back to the aerial view, and you can see that there are roughly 20 acres of mature trees concentrated along the southeastern property line. During the review process, the applicants indicated it would be premature to agree to preservation of any such vegetation because site plans for the new industry looking to occupy the site are not yet finalized. We have noted in the cultural or historical features section that, and if you look on the aerial here, there's this tiny yellow box. That is actually the location of an existing cemetery. The applicants did agree in development plan condition 12 to install a boundary fence between the development and the cemetery, and to install a plaque on the fence that lists the cemetery name and names of those buried in the cemetery if known. And the applicants also agreed that before development occurs in the vicinity of the cemetery to establish an access easement from the cemetery to a public right-of-way. The application complies with the majority of the criteria evaluated in the site characteristics review, with considerations noted regarding preservation of existing vegetation. Touching on one item in the site design and compatibility review on page 4, looking at proposed open space, the maximum watt coverage in the proposed heavy industrial zone is 90%, meaning that 10% of the property would typically have to remain as open space. However, the applicants did agree in the development plan conditions to provide at least 20% green space for the entire development. Section 314 outlines our requirements for a traffic impact study. However, the transportation agencies did not require a traffic impact study. I did mention those commitments to potential roadway improvements in the future, though, just a second ago. Those are outlined in development plan condition 6. We'll run through the rest of the development plan conditions on page 5. Number 1 restricts use of the land for products which could be hazardous to human life or property. 2 outlines screening requirements for loading docks, vehicle use areas, public use areas, and outside storage areas. 3 addresses signage on the property and limits signage to no more than seven feet in height with a maximum sign-face area of 100 square feet. 4 looks at abatement of malodorous emissions. 5 addresses open space and requirements for interior vehicle use area landscaping, and also addresses setbacks for parking areas. 6 looks at access to the site and potential roadway improvements. 7 prohibits specific uses within the development. 8 outlines those setbacks that I referenced earlier from a residential use. Number 9 and 10 address environmental considerations. And 11 deals with stormwater. And 12 addresses the existing cemetery. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, the staff evaluated several items. We found eight of those items to be in compliance. There were two that were out of compliance, and there are six items that the Planning Commission should evaluate for compliance, the first being LU 1.1.1 and 1.1.2, which look at the future land use map. LU 1.1.3 addresses compatibility with the surrounding area. LU 2 looks at quality of development and character of the area. The application doesn't comply with LU 2.1.4 or NCR 1.1.6, which addresses preservation of existing vegetation. Jumping down to NCR 2.4 and NCR 241, the Planning Commission should determine if the proposed development will result in premature development of the countryside, and if it will preserve and enhance Warren County's rural and agricultural heritage. And I believe that is all for the items you need to weigh in on. I'm going to jump back to page 1 and go through a few points to consider. The first is that the Planning Commission should consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the future land use map meets the criteria in LU 1.1.4, and if the future land use map amendment is approved, the proposal would be consistent with the future land use map and industrial category. Second, the proposed development complies with the majority of the review criteria, with exceptions noted regarding preservation of existing vegetation. If approved, the subject properties will be consolidated with and become part of the existing trans park. And then last, the development plan conditions, this isn't in your staff report, but I thought it was worth mentioning that they're nearly identical to those that are already in place for the existing properties in the trans park. That is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hurt. Commissioners, any questions for Rachel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here, or their representative, and would like to make any comments?
Gaines Penn, 1101 College Street, Bowling Green, Kentucky. I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Penn.
It's hard to follow Rachel's thorough report, so I'll keep my comments brief. The Commission will recall that back, I believe it was in April, the Governor made the announcement about the electric battery plant that will be coming to Bowling Green. This is one of the, this is where that plant will be located. The Commission will also recall back in, I believe it was October of last year, we requested rezoning of the Ritchie Farm, which is where the first phase of that plant will go. I'm pleased to report that negotiations were going on as early as this afternoon, finalizing those plans, and the conveyance of that lot should take place sometime late summer, early fall. The land in, it's before you all tonight, represents phases 2 and phase 3. And like Rachel said, the development plan conditions are largely identical to what is already in place as this, as the trans park moves to the east. I think there's a concern noted regarding the preservation of mature trees. If you look at that map, and I don't know how to do the clicker thing, but the bulk of those trees is down around the railroad track, and it's basically where a sinkhole is. The property owners that the ITA is purchasing that land from, that's part of our agreement that that section of land regarding that sinkhole will not be developed. So those trees will remain in place as a practical matter. But as we negotiate with this new business coming to town, we historically have shied away from making a commitment to preserve any particular trees. But in this case, that will, that's a fact, okay? So we'll be okay there. With regard to the Flume Amendment, I would just point out, and I believe the standard is, a demonstrated overriding public benefit of the proposed development that may be a major public facility or amenity, the provision of a major source of employment, or an economic development asset. I would, I would share this with you. I think this is matter of public record, but the company that's coming to town is, the project's scope would be develop, develop this land in up to three phases. Each phase will have two pods. A pod is amazing to me. It's 832,000 square feet. That's a huge building. The total capital investment for this project would be $2,500 million, $500 million, and create up to 2,500 new full-time jobs. That's a game changer for this, for this local economy. And I have Ms. Rosansky and Christian Howard with me from the chamber tonight if you have any specific questions regarding the development plan, but we would ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Penn or the other applicants that are here tonight?
Chair Warren, I have one question. Penn, I think you indicated that there would be phases 2 and 3 is what we're looking at.
Sir.
How many phases are there total?
Three.
Three, okay.
Yeah. Phase 1 should actually start moving dirt this year. Phase 2 is probably about 24, 24 months past that, and another 24 past that for the optional phase 3.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One question, if I may. Clearly, the, in the staff presentation, the, everything was very much in compliance. The only real question was those trees that you alluded to. And, and so if I understand correctly, I guess the only possible scenario where you would take those trees out would be if you had to mitigate the sinkhole for some unseen reason. Other than that, you plan to leave those there, correct?
That's correct. And the current owners, I say this in jest, I think they really like that sinkhole, and they want it to stay there, so it's going to stay there.
All right, very good. We like that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Gaines. Commissioners, any other questions? Would you pull your microphone down?
You mentioned this being, the buildings come in in phases. So how many acres exactly were total?
The first phase, I believe, is 217 acres, okay?
And that's what's already?
That's what, that's phase 1. That's scheduled for this year. Phase 2 is, I believe, 179, yeah, 100, hey, 179 acres for phase 2, and then there's 125 acres set aside for phase 3. And so those, phase 2, phase 3, that's what we're here on tonight.
It's all in this 300 acre?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Penn. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? Yes, ma'am, if you would approach the microphone, please. If you would state your name and your address, please.
My name is Lisa Hampton. I live at 3299 Elrod Road, but this is for my parents who live on-
Could you tell the truth?
I do. I agree to tell the truth.
Okay, thank you.
But this is in regards for my parents who live on Freeport Road. So my question is, with them doing these phases, what does that do for the people who live on Freeport Road? Are they planning to expand that road in the future, or is it just going to be kind of on that end? Because where this property is located, they're on around. So that, with them changing this to heavy industrial, that means more traffic, more people, trucks. So I want to know what their plan is in the future.
Ms. Hurt, could you answer that, or Mr. Penn, either one?
Thank you for your question. I believe a couple of things to point out with regard to access to the property that will answer your question. Primary access to this plant is going to be through an extension of Production Avenue, okay? Which is good. There, the project does involve an, a potential, or no, a future expansion of Freeport Road. So before there's any development or access on Freeport Road, it will have to be widened, and that's, that's a part of this project that will be funded with state, with state money.
So you'll expand the whole road all the way to-
No, ma'am. If you, if you look, I know, it's hard to see. If you see upon the plat where it says envision.
So it's just on that end?
It's about from that way all up towards, what is that, Louisville Road? Right there. See that? That was where it would, the widest end, and it would basically go up to Louisville.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Mr. Penn, to summarize, would it be fair to say that envision would have to improve the road because of the, the industrial use that they're going to have for, if they use that road in that capacity?
Commissioner Graham, that's, that's exactly correct. The current state of Freeport Road is not wide enough to do any industrial traffic, and there's no plan to do that until it's suitable.
Good. And so, so envision wouldn't consider developing a plant where they have no access, correct?
Not, no.
Not logistically. And so I think it's safe for us to assume that that would be changed, that that would be developed prior to them developing the battery plant.
Correct. And again, just to emphasize, the main, main access will be an extension of that Production Avenue, which bleeds out to the whole other side of the park. Okay? Thank you.
Would you come to the microphone, please? This is, this is recorded tonight.
For future plans, which I'm not against change at all, but I have to take care of my parents. So my thing is, in the future, do they plan to go further of Freeport Road? Or they kind of just going to stay on that end of Freeport Road where they're at now? Are they kinda just gonna stay on that end of Freeport Road where they're at now?
Another good question. I think the answer is, at this point, we have no other contracts underway with, the ITA has no additional contracts to acquire additional land along Freeport Road. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Is anybody else in the audience that has a question regarding this proposal tonight? Thank you, ma'am, for your questions. And so the first item tonight would call for a motion for the flume amendment. This is the full twelve-member board. McKenna.
Make a motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number twenty-twenty-one-twelve, flume. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has met the criteria to amend the flume as outlined in LU one-point-one-point-four in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Stark?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel? Commissioner Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Our second item is the zoning map amendment for the proposed property.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with an addition upon the general development plan, docket number twenty-twenty-one-forty-Z, County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved for the zoning map amendment and will be presented to the Warren County Fiscal Court. Thank you all. Our next item tonight is twenty-twenty-two-thirteen, flume. JS Property Holdings LLC has filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a tract of land containing approximately five-point-one acres located at the southern intersection of Martinsville Road and Smith Grove-Scottsville Road from Ag to rural density residential. If this motion were to be approved, JS Property Holdings has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately five-point-one acres located at the southern intersection of Martinsville Road and Smith Grove-Scottsville Road from Ag to RE Residential States with the general development plan. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting in June for the property you just outlined at the intersection of Martinsville Road and Smith Grove-Scottsville Road. The current zoning is Ag with a current use also of agriculture. The future land use map is agriculture with a requested amendment this evening to go to rural density residential. This is the preliminary lot layout that was submitted, and we'll touch more on this in just a minute. Looking on page two, you'll find the criteria and procedures for outlining, or for amending the future land use map. The applicants provided the italicized text as a part of their application about three-quarters of the way down page two, and the planning commission should determine if this adequately addresses the criteria to amend the future land use map. Looking at the site characteristics review under the layout, lot sizes, and setbacks, the proposed layout is shown on the screen. Setbacks will follow the RE standards set forth in the zoning ordinance, and also an increased front yard setback of sixty feet along Martinsville Road and one hundred feet along Smith Grove-Scottsville Road. So Martinsville Road would be on the left-hand side here with that sixty-foot building setback, and then Smith Grove-Scottsville Road would have a one-hundred-foot building setback. Proposed lot sizes range from one to one-point-one-three acres. The average lot size within a quarter of a mile is fifteen-point-zero-eight acres, and the average lot size for existing and approved lots within a half-mile is fourteen-point-six acres. The planning commission should determine if the proposal, including the proposed lot sizes, is compatible in this location. Under the transportation infrastructure, the property does have frontage on two roads, including Smith Grove-Scottsville Road, which is a state-maintained road with twenty-feet of pavement width. And then there are also proposed lots which will have vehicular access to Smith Grove, sorry, to Martinsville Road, which is a county-maintained road with sixteen feet of pavement Martinsville Road, the sixteen-foot road width is less than the county standard for acceptance by the county, which is typically eighteen feet. Looking at the water adequacy, the property is served by adequate water to meet the fire protection requirements, and if the proposal is approved, at least one additional fire hydrant will have to be installed to serve the proposed development. The application complies with some of the items in the site characteristics review with considerations noted regarding the proposed lot sizes and the current sixteen-foot road width for Martinsville Road and additional hydrant requirements. Looking at the site design and compatibility review, within a quarter of a mile, the median density is zero-point-zero-two dwelling units per acre, and with half-mile, within a half-mile, the existing and approved median density is zero-point-one-four dwelling units per acre, and the proposed density is zero-point-nine-seven dwelling units per acre, which is over forty-eight times the median density within a quarter of a mile and nearly seven times the median density within a half-mile. The planning commission should determine if the proposed density is compatible. Looking at surrounding architectural features, in the area, the median home size is fourteen-hundred square feet, roughly. The development plan conditions for a recent zone change approved by the planning commission about a half a mile north of this property require a minimum home size of fifteen-hundred square feet. The proposed home size for the new homes is thirteen-hundred square feet. Looking at building orientation, the building orientation for the existing homes in the area are primarily front-facing facades toward Martinsville Road and Smith Grove-Scottsville Road. Three of the proposed homes will face Martinsville Road, and two of the proposed homes will face Smith Grove-Scottsville Road. The applicants did agree in the development plan conditions to screen side or rear-facing facades along both roadways with a minimum of six evergreen trees and three deciduous trees per one hundred linear feet. The application complies with some of the items regarding site design with considerations noted regarding density and home size, and the planning commission should consider if the proposal is compatible. Looking at the development plan conditions, number one limits the development to a maximum of five lots. Number two touches on building orientation and screening requirements that I just mentioned. Three looks at those increased setbacks along both roadways. Four addresses foundation materials. Five looks at the minimum home size. Six requires a minimum of a two-car attached garage. Seven limits building height to two stories. Eight addresses building materials. Nine looks at utility placement. Ten addresses tree preservation, and also requires that a minimum of two trees be planted per lot at the time of construction of any new residents. Eleven addresses sinkholes, and twelve looks at considerations for onsite septic systems. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, the application does comply with a majority of these items. There are a few items for your consideration, including LU one-point-one-point-one and one-point-one-point-two, which deal with the future land use map. LU one-point-one-point-three looks at compatibility. LU two addresses quality of development and character of the area. NCR two-four and two-four-one, while the development is located in an area with sufficient water pressure to meet the minimum fire protection requirements, the current future land use designation for the property is agriculture with a proposed amendment to rural density residential. The planning commission should determine if the proposal will result in premature development pressure on the countryside, and whether or not it will set a precedent for increased density, a greater number of smaller residential lots, loss of farmland, and loss of agricultural character in the vicinity. And last, HN two-point-one and HN four, the planning commission should determine if the proposed five-lot subdivision with lot sizes of roughly one acre near the Warren County-Ally County line is located in a suitable location, and if it will enhance the array of housing options in the area. And with that, I'll go through our points to consider on page one. Number one touches on density. The proposed density, again, is nine-point, point-nine-seven dwelling units per acre, which is over forty-eight times the median density in a quarter of a mile and nearly seven times the density within a half-mile. Proposed lot sizes range from one to one-point-one-three acres with an average lot size within a quarter of a mile being fifteen, roughly fifteen acres, and the average lot size within a half-mile roughly fourteen-point-six acres. The current road width for Martinsville Road is sixteen feet. The fourth point to consider looks at the proposed minimum home size compared to the median home sizes in the area. Four, the planning commission should consider if the future land use map amendment, including the proposed density, lot size, and home size near the Warren County-Ally County line, is appropriate. And last, the planning commission should further consider if the proposal will result in premature development on the countryside, including increased density, smaller lots, loss of farmland, and loss of rural character. That is all for the staff report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt?
I actually have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the development plan condition number eight, on the material, we usually have percentages, and especially with vinyl, there's no percentages listed. Can we?
Yes, ma'am, that may be something the applicant would like to address here in just a little bit, but you're correct that there's not a percentage specified for any of those materials.
So currently, they're proposing twelve-to-fourteen-hundred square foot, all vinyl with split face block foundations?
Uh, yes, the minimum spelled out in the development plan conditions is thirteen-hundred square feet, split face block foundations, and a minimum of a two-car attached garage.
Thank you, commissioners. Yes, sir.
Rachel, on the road width for Martinsville Road is sixteen feet. Is that standard or?
Not for new roads. If the county accepts a new road, the minimum standard is generally eighteen feet, but this road was developed before that standard was in place.
But there's any plans for work on that particular section of that road?
Not that I'm aware of. They did agree to coordinate access with the transportation agencies, so it will have to be reviewed before any access would be granted to the road. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Stark. Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Hurt?
Yes, ma'am.
Assuming the residential is supposed to have access or not?
Yes.
There's a note in here about the soil, not really in the best. Is there a chance that?
Yeah, so it's not uncommon where there might be areas where the soil suitability is extremely limited, but they did agree in the development plan conditions that they would get a site evaluation for each of the proposed lots. So in the event that the site evaluation came back and said that the lot needed to be bigger, it's possible that they would have to shift lot lines or even potentially increase the size of a lot, which might result in a loss of the number of lots if, if that site evaluation came back with concerns.
Thank you, commissioners. Any other questions for Ms. Hurt? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Sir, we'll get to the, to the audience next, okay? Is the applicant here or their representative, please?
I'm Bridgman, ten-ten College Street, and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Bridgman.
Commissioner Vitale, I'll address your question first. We did not include percentages in the DPCs, and let's see if I can get to... So here is the current zoning map, and currently, there are no houses near this development that are brick. All of these through here that are RE already are vinyl. My client doesn't have plans to use solely vinyl, but we do, do wanna keep these affordable as much as we can. The existing development that was rezoned recently up here back in March, that was before you all, that Mr. Davenport did, I think he agreed at the hearing to do twenty-five percent brick on the front facades. We are prepared to agree to that if it comes to it, but would like to have flexibility, if possible.
Bridgman, here's, there were some other questions. Rick, you had a question?
No.
Okay.
So, so, Mr. Bridgman, the, currently, they're proposing, your client is proposing no brick on the foundations and a hundred percent vinyl. Also, help us understand, Ms. Hurt's report said that the density is seven times the density within a half, half a mile, and you indicate that, well, you tell me what you indicate.
Regarding the density?
Yes. And let's, let's circle back to those other two issues as well.
Okay, so regarding the density, I mean, I think with this proposal, it is the weakest point we have, admittedly, but I'll go back up to this development that was just approved. There were, there was a ten-acre lot included in this that the staff wanted to exclude for density purposes. If we do that, the density in this development within a half a mile is the exact same that we are proposing.
So, so say that last part again, there was a ten-acre lot that was excluded?
That is correct. So in their development plan, there was a lot, it was lot number two, that was ten acres, and by right, they could have developed that under the current zoning of Ag without having to come before this commission. I believe you were absent that day, if I recall correctly.
Thank you, perfect. And then, so, let's talk, if we could, about the, Miss Vitale asked you about brick on the homes or to, a way to keep this from being a hundred percent vinyl, and also, of course, the, the brick foundations. Clearly, affordability is a factor every time we build, but a desirable appearance also adds to the character of the development for the, for the, for the neighborhood. Would you be willing to discuss with your client whether they would find a, a brick facade, front facade acceptable, and brick foundations acceptable?
You'd do twenty-five percent on the front facade, and then the foundation be brick?
So you're saying twenty-five percent of the house, or twenty-five percent of the front?
Or just, just twenty-five percent of the front facade?
Facade.
You're saying just twenty-five percent?
Correct, plus the foundation.
That, that's kinda hard to determine what.
I think we'd rather you say twenty-five percent of the house, which would be the front of the house. Or just say the front of the house would be something other than vinyl, and, and with the windows and doors and everything, it's not that much.
The front of the house, LP smart siding, would that be acceptable?
Would, LP smart siding is, for, for this commission, LP smart siding is considered a cementitious material. So if he's, if he's planning on LP smart siding, that's a, that's kind of a different issue. We need to know that, though.
And I believe that's, that's in there as one of the approved, I mean, we can agree to not use vinyl on the front, if that would make-
That's what we're looking for.
Yeah, we can agree to that.
Yeah.
As long as we have some other materials other than brick that we can use in the front.
And then, so, just to be clear, the foundation would need to be brick, would need to be a brick veneer foundation.
Correct.
And then LP smart siding or other cementitious material on the front facade?
Right.
Okay.
And the primary reason for, for this is aesthetics?
Your stand?
To make sure that things are, that they look good within the area.
Pull your ma, your mic down, please. I'm sorry.
The front facade would be of materials other than vinyl, or are we gonna limit the front facade to brick or LP smart siding?
Amp, I think it would be brick or other cementitious material to include LP smart siding. I would prefer not to leave it to- I would prefer not to leave it too, too far open past that.
Okay with that.
And would you at some point bring your client forward and let him be, or be sworn and confirm that agreement?
Brick foundation.
Name is Josh Roney. Uh, address is eighteen fifty-four Silent Grove Church Road, Brownsville.
Swear to tell the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Josh, did you hear the, the, uh, conditions that we agreed to with the commission?
Yep.
And are you in agreement with all of those?
Yes.
So just so clear, Josh, do you understand what shall require, shall be required to be constructed, uh, brick, LP smart siding, or other...
Yes, sir.
And that all foundations shall be, uh, constructed with brick veneer?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant or their representative?
I've got a question about the, uh, access to Martinsville Road. Um, that's a pretty busy road to be as narrow as it is. Uh, there's quite a bit of agriculture traffic, and then there's also a river access. Particularly Lot One worries me with how close it is to that interchange with one oh one. Is there any current plans that you all know of to do anything with one oh one, or, I'm sorry, with Martinsville Road, or how you plan to address that issue?
Not that I'm aware of. We are going to work with the county on access, and, you know, your concern is very valid. I would assume they're going to put access somewhere back here. Uh, I, I do think it's probably a hazard to have access somewhere up here, but we are going to work with the county to get access, uh, before this is approved.
You know what the frontage is for Lot One, right there? On Martinsville, yeah. Okay.
Hundred fifty feet. And we've pushed the setback as far as we can on this lot. Uh, if we pushed it any further, it would not be a buildable lot.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other questions for, uh, the applicant or their, um, their representative? Thank you, Mr. Bridgeman. Um, is there anyone in the audience tonight that has questions, uh, to this proposal? Yes, sir, if you would come to the microphone, please.
My name's Steve Gray. Yep, I'm gonna swear in. Uh, I swear to tell the truth?
What, what's your address, Mr. Gray?
Five seventy-nine Cox Road. I live in this neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So my, my concern is that, um, five, as discussed earlier, the density would go way up for this small area. Um, having five houses crammed into five acres, I think, would look poor on the neighborhood as most of the houses are spread out. The point of moving out to the country is to have good country views and to be away, like, kind of spaced out. I think this would defeat the purpose. Two lots, maybe, three lots, okay, five, far too many. I'm also concerned about the view when you look to turn, when you look for traffic, when you're coming out of the neighborhood, because there's no access. That's, that's the only way in or out, is Martinsville Ford Road. And if you, uh, look to the right, it's already kind of a hazard, and I can only imagine a house being there, you wouldn't be able to see down the road. So I, I worry about, um, the traffic there. Uh, also the septic that they were saying, so if the septic fields are already poor and then having five houses within five acres all sharing that, that lateral field or, you know, running together, I, I just, that's a concern for me, and I wonder what they're going to do, so, thanks.
Thank you, sir. The septic system, sir, would have to be approved by the warrant, as was brought up earlier by the, uh, the health department, and if it's not applicable, they, they could not move forward with that. So thank you, Mr. Cox. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight has a question regarding this application? Yes, ma'am?
Gina Goodman, Tube Eight, uh, three ninety-four Martinsville Road, Oakland, Kentucky.
Ms. Goodman, you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I too. My mother's property is adjacent to this proposed site. When she sold that part of the farm off, it was supposed to be, uh, I just want to make sure that there's not going to be any mobile homes in there, it's all going to be solid built on foundations. And my second was also the concern of the site trying to get out of there. When you pull out Martinsville Road looking towards down one oh one, you're taking a chance, and if it's foggy, you're in trouble, because you can't even see their lights. And that's without houses there. And the, the road is very narrow. We have people fly through there going to the river with their kayaks and canoes, which I have nothing against them, but there's tractors going one way, kayaks going the other, and now on a very narrow road.
Thank you very much. So we've heard about the septic system, the traffic on Martinsville Road, and the visibility. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that has a, uh, concern or a question regarding this, uh, proposal? If I may, let me try to address visibility, and this is a question for staff. Uh, the, um, the applicant, uh, just as with, uh, septic system, uh, this is a county or a state road?
No, well, Martinsville is county, and then Smith Grove Scottsville Road is state.
State road. Um, is the county's position the same as the state, uh, where they do, uh, the county pick, does a site evaluation, and they pick the location for the driveway entrance?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so is it safe to tell our audience members that, um, that some traffic official will be looking at these sites and will pick the location of the, the safest location for the driveways?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions before we call for a, a, a motion, please?
Dean, if I can address that real quick, I think, um, some of these concerns, Martinsville Road, um, taking a right towards Scottsville on one oh one is a sharp turn. Um, I think their concern is the visibility of the housing structure itself, less so than the, uh, driveway on Martinsville. So I don't know if the applicant wants to address that at all to, to speak to them.
Only spot a house can be put on lot. I think that's one. This one is back here. So if we're up here turning, I don't think it's going to, I think it's so far back that it should not be an issue with visibility here.
And that's going to have sixty-foot of clearance on the, on the one oh one side, correct?
No, so on the one oh one side, these three lots will have a one hundred-foot setback. So these houses will be back here, and then this is a sixty-foot setback on, excuse me, it's one hundred on these two lots, and that's sixty on these three off of Martinsville. This is just a standard setback of twenty-five feet in the back.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Uh, any other questions, commissioners? Would call for a motion for the Flume Amendment, please. Make a motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number twenty twenty-two thirteen Flume. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed Flume Amendment has met the directive to amend the Flume as outlined in LU one point one point four in the comprehensive plan. Further requests that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing. Thank you.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel?
No.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
And Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Warren, there were six votes cast...
Hamp, pull your mic down, please, I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you for reminding me. There were six votes cast in favor of that motion. There were four votes cast against it, so the motion to approve the Flume Amendment passes.
Well, that motion will go to the, is, is approved, uh, it's planning commission final action. The next motion would be for the, um, for the zoning map amendment, please. Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and condition upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-two forty-one Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus Twenty Thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved and goes to the Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-two fourteen Flume. Gary Allen Hunt has filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a tract of land containing approximately five point three four acres located at Zero Louisville Road from Ag to rural density residential. If this motion were approved, Gary Allen Hunt, twenty twenty-two forty-five Z County, Gary Allen Hunt, has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing five point three four acres located at Zero Louisville Road from Ag to RE Residential Estate with the general development plan.
Warren, we had a pre-application meeting on May the nineteenth for the property that you highlighted, and then it's highlighted in yellow on your street. Uh, the current zoning is agriculture. Current land use is single-family residential. Uh, and the future, uh, land use is agriculture, and the applicants supplied, uh, this, uh, exhibit for you to review. Um, the applicants are proposing to amend the Flume for five point three acres from agriculture to rural density residential, and the applicants would like to rezon the property from, uh, agriculture to, uh, RE in order to divide the property, uh, into a maximum of three single-family residential lots. Looking at the future land use map, LU one point one point four, um, of the comp plan outlines procedures for amending the Flume. Uh, the applicants included a brief narrative there in italics, um, to address the, uh, the criteria. Uh, the planning commission should determine if the applicant has adequately addressed the criteria to amend the Flume. Looking down at the site characteristics review, um, lot, I lay out lot size and setbacks. Uh, within one-fourth mile, lot sizes range from one to two point, or, uh, to two hundred and four acres, with a median lot size of four acres and an average lot size of thirty-four acres. Within a half mile, lot sizes range from one to two hundred and four acres with a median lot size of three point five acres and an average lot size of forty-two acres. Uh, the proposed lot sizes for this development range from one to three point three acres. Uh, the planning commission should determine if the proposal, um, including the proposed lot sizes are compatible, uh, in this location. Uh, this application complies with majority of the items in the site characteristics review, with, uh, again, considerations, um, noted regarding the proposed lot sizes. Looking down to the site design and compatibility review, uh, the proposed density is zero point five six dwelling units per acre, uh, just under five times the median density within one-fourth mile and fourteen times the median density within a half a mile. The planning commission should determine if this is, uh, compatible with the surrounding area. Looking down at the surrounding architectural features, uh, home in the, homes in the area range from, uh, one thousand two hundred and sixty-three square feet to three thousand one hundred and fifty-five square feet, with a median home size of one thousand four hundred and seventy-nine square feet and an average of one thousand seven hundred and forty-nine square feet. Uh, all but one home has at least a garage or, uh, attached carport. The applicant has proposed a minimum home size of one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet for new residences and did not include a requirement that new development incorporate, uh, a carport or a garage. Looking at the building material review, just over sixty percent of the existing homes in the area are brick or stone with brick or stone foundations. Uh, the remaining homes have vinyl exteriors with flip, split face block foundations. The applicant has not imposed, uh, a minimal material requirement, uh, for non-vine exterior. Plain face block is prohibited as a foundation material, but not split face block. Looking down at building orientation, new homes should face Louisville Road. Uh, existing homes on the south side of Louisville Road are set back at least forty-five feet from the front property line. Uh, development plan condition number four requires that any new home constructed on Lot, uh, two, one, or Lot number three face Louisville Road, but there is no requirement that the home on the proposed Lot two face Louisville Road. Uh, staff suggested that the applicant include an increased front yard setback for proposed lots two dash one and three, but the applicant expressed hesitation regarding this matter due to existing overhead electrical easement. Um, in summary, this application complies with some of the items regarding site, site design with considerations noted regarding the density, home size, uh, carport garage requirements, building materials, foundation materials, building orientation, and front yard setbacks. Uh, the planning commission should consider if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding Looking over at the development plan conditions, um, number one, the, uh, development shall be limited to a maximum of three lots. Uh, number two, home sizes constructed, new homes constructed on the property shall contain a minimum of twelve hundred and fifty square feet of heated and cooled living space. Number three addresses the, those, those building materials. Uh, number four, uh, any new home constructed on proposed Lot three or two dash one, so face, shall face Louisville Road. Uh, number five addresses, uh, the access to the property. Uh, number six addresses the septic system. Uh, number seven pertains to syncope mitigation, and number eight, um, a minimum of two trees shall be planted per lot at the time of construction of any new residence. Looking down at the Focus Twenty Thirty category review, staff evaluated seventeen items. The planning commission should determine if the applicant has provided significant, sufficient evidence to support the proposed Flume Amendment, um, including if it's, uh, compatible, including the, uh, proposed lot size, density, home size, carport garage requirements, building materials, foundation materials, building orientation, front yard setbacks. Uh, the proposal may, uh, may comply with LU two. Uh, the planning commission should determine if the proposed requirements for new residences outline, and the development plan conditions will result in high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. Uh, the planning commission should determine compliance with LU two point one point four, uh, PR one point seven, and NCR one point, one point six. Uh, the applicant did not agree to preserve any of the existing vegetation, but did include a commitment to plant a minimum of two trees per lot at the time of construction. Um, the proposal may comply with, uh, HN two point one and HN four. Uh, the planning commission should determine if the proposed three-lot subdivision with lot sizes roughly one to three acres at the Warren, uh, County, Evanson County line is located in a suitable location, and if it will enhance the array of housing options available in the area. Looking over to the points to consider, uh, the proposed density is, uh, zero five six dwelling units per acre, just under five times the median density within one-fourth mile and fourteen times the median density within a half a mile. Proposed lot sizes for this development range from one point, or... Proposed lot sizes for this development range from 1 acre to 3.3 acres. Again, the average lot size within a fourth mile is 34 acres and the average lot size within a half mile is 42 acres. The median home size in the area is 1,479 square feet. The proposed minimum home size for this development is 1,250 square feet. All but one of the homes in the area have at least garage, have at least a garage or detached carport. The applicant has not imposed a requirement for those. And the planning commission should further consider if a Flume Amendment, including the proposed lot sizes, density, home size, carport garage requirements, building materials, foundation materials, building orientation, and front yard setbacks at the Warren County-Ebenson County line is appropriate. And finally, the planning commission should further consider if the proposal will result in premature development on the countryside, including increased density, additional smaller lots, and loss of farmland and loss of rural character. That is all we have for our staff report. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, any questions?
I did have a question. Not to beat a dead horse, but we're going to talk about vinyl siding again. It should probably be comparable to the last application since there were no requirements on vinyl. I would imagine the same criteria as the last in order to be consistent.
Yeah, we'll address that, so we're talking about vinyl. Commissioner, any other questions?
I have a question. It appears that there are five lots to the left of this property and from the aerial view, it doesn't look like maybe those lots have been developed. Are there houses on those developments or on those acres there?
Are you talking about the two properties that are highlighted that are in black and then there's three in yellow?
Yes.
So the two in black are vacant and the other three there have-
Houses, okay. And there is an existing home on the larger piece of property or the large lot, is that correct? Or is it just an auxiliary building? Okay, just a structure.
There actually might be a house there in that tree canopy. I don't know if that, is that a barn as well?
No, it's right here.
Okay.
Adjacent property?
I see.
There's a house on the adjacent property.
Okay, that's the adjacent property that I'm seeing. Ms. Ritchie, is that all you had? I want to follow, I had the same question in fact. And so, so there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 RE lots to the left of this and it looks like one across the street. Are these one-acre lots? Do we know what size those are? We know that they're a minimum of an acre, but I guess what I'm wondering is, are they larger than an acre?
I don't know if we have that. Yeah, it's in page, or on page 12. Proposed tract 2 is 3.3 acres. Proposed tract 2.1 is roughly one acre and tract 3 is roughly one acre.
So, and I probably stated that poorly, what I'm trying to understand is, those adjacent, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 RE lots, are those one-acre lots roughly? So, on this page, right here, we see five RE lots adjacent on the same side of the street and one straight across the street.
Those may actually be smaller than an acre. Just visually looking at this, it may actually be smaller and they would have been developed before our current requirement where the minimum lot size is one acre.
Okay.
Those lots are acre lots. Except the one was a two-acre, I think that's split. The two lots are black. Was it two-acre tract?
Thank you, Commissioners. Other questions? All right, is the Appken here or the representative?
My name's Gary Hunt. What is it I'm saying?
Do you live somewhere?
Yes, I do.
What's your head dress?
I'm not homeless yet. 787 Hayes Road.
All right, swear to tell the truth, Ms. Trump.
I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
Is there a question or do I just need to make a presentation?
I think what we generally do before you make your presentation is, I think the Commissioners have some questions. So, if I may, Mr. Hunt, the, probably the three things I would like to address is the way the restrictions are currently written, you could build, or someone could build 100% vinyl on these lots.
That is correct.
And there would be a, there would be a, no brick on the foundation.
No, I went with the split.
You've got split-faced block, but there's no brick on the foundation, is that correct? And, and so, and also 1,250 square feet minimum, is that correct? So, in the previous application, we asked for some commitment on either, on something other than vinyl on the, at least the front facade, so that we don't have 100% vinyl. And also, would you agree to a brick foundation? And then lastly, the 1,250 square feet, in the previous application, they agreed to 1,400 square feet. 1,300 square feet, I stand corrected, 1,300 square feet.
You go in with the 1,300 square feet meets your objective?
It would satisfy mine.
Okay, let's just change that to 1,300, please. And what I would like to do is stay with the split brick foundation and go with the material on the front that would be something other than vinyl, which the clear siding you were talking about. And sometimes you get into the masonry thing, it's a major difference in cost.
When you say clear vinyl, what do you mean?
Well, not vinyl, clearboard, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
So, you're referring to like a hardy plank or an LP smart siding?
Right, that's what I was-
And, and so, the, the brick veneer foundation, I certainly can't speak directly to cost for a project like this, but it does enhance the appearance of the project rather significantly. And usually, the mason that's laying the block foundation can also lay the brick veneer, so you don't have to schedule two different, two different people there, so to speak.
That brick, excuse me, could that brick veneer be just on the front and have split block on the back and the ends? Because that would be the part you actually see. That'd kind of be a meet in the middle.
As I think through this logistically, I'm trying to think whether you could tie those two materials together at the corners without having a mortar joint that's going to be problematic. So, brick for a corner interlaces and you would not be able to interlace that with a block foundation. So, traditionally, we see those as a brick foundation all the way around. Part of that is, is of course, appearance, but the second part of that is the structural integrity of the foundation itself. So, so I think the question that I would ask is, you've agreed to the 1,300 square feet. Could you also agree to a brick foundation, a brick veneer foundation? You'd still lay block for your foundation, the supporting foundation? And then, on the front of the home, LP smart siding or other cementitious material?
Like hardy?
Hardy.
Hardy veneer, right.
Or you could also do adhered veneer, so if you wanted to do something like that where it's a thin veneer of brick or stone or something like that, some people like that appearance and you certainly could do that as well. The only other question I would have is, would you be willing to put a carport or garage as attached?
Carport would be fine. I think, I think most people appreciate a-
I think we'd like to see something.
Yeah.
And I know there are some other carports in the area, so I would be okay if we at least went with a carport.
With that?
All I have. Before, just a second, is there any, Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Hunt? Okay, I'm sorry, Hannah.
Oh, pardon me, I didn't mean to jump out ahead. Mr. Hunt, I've heard you say, and I just want to summarize, that you've agreed to amend development plan condition number two to provide that each residential structure shall have a minimum of 1,300 square feet of heated and cooled space, that the foundations for the residential structures shall be of brick veneer, that the front facade of each residential structure shall be constructed of either brick, hardy plank, or LP smart siding. And finally, number four, that a carport will be constructed for each residence and attached to the residence.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trump. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question regarding this proposal from Mr. Hunt? Would call, Commissioners would call for a motion, please, on the Flume first?
Motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 202214 Flume. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed Flume Amendment has met the directive to amend the Flume as outlined in LU 1.1.4 in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Cecil. Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. Call for a motion, please, on the zoning map amendment of the proposed property.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon the general development plan, docket number 202245Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am, the motion is approved and will go to the Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Our next item tonight is 202215 Flume. CNT Properties has filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a tract of land containing approximately 26 acres located Zero Loving Road from industrial to mixed-use commercial. If this future land use map amendment were to be approved, 202246Z County CNT Properties has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 59.9 acres at Zero Glasgow Road and Zero Loving Road from agriculture and RE residential state to RS1D single-family residential with a general development plan.
Are we ready? Are we ready to keep going?
We're ready.
All right.
Just want to make sure these acreages are right.
They're approximate, you're good. All right, we had a pre-application meeting on May the 4th for the properties you just outlined, having frontage on both Glasgow Road and then Loving Road down here at the bottom. The current zoning is residential estate and agriculture with a current use of agriculture and vacant. The future land use map designation is split, and so the first proposal for your consideration this evening is a future land use map amendment for the industrial proportion, the industrial portion proposed to go to mixed-use commercial, which would match the rest of the property. The preliminary lot layout is shown here. We'll look at that in detail here in just a minute, but first I'll mention LU 1.1.4 again, which outlines the procedures to amend the future land use map. And the applicants supplied the italicized text at the bottom of page two as a part of their application. The planning commission should determine if the applicants have adequately addressed the findings required to amend the future land use map. The applicants have stated in their argument that the development is limited in size and scope and compatible with the surrounding area. However, the proposal is over eight times the median density within a quarter of a mile and 18 times the median density within a half mile. If approved, the development will be the first steward residential development in this part of Warren County. Looking at the layout, lot sizes, and setbacks under the site characteristics review, this is the preliminary development plan that's shown on the screen. The development will be served by a main entrance on Glasgow Road up here at the top with an additional access point also proposed on Loving Road, which would be the entrance down at the bottom. Individual lots will be served by the new internal streets. Lot sizes and setbacks would adhere to the minimum requirements in the RS1D zone as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff suggested that the applicants consider an increased front building setback along Glasgow Road as the nearest home to the east on Glasgow Road is set back around 100 feet from the front property line. This was not addressed by the applicants. Looking at the transportation infrastructure, again, the properties have frontage on multiple roads. Glasgow Road being a state-maintained roadway with 22 feet of pavement width. Loving Road is a county-maintained rural local roadway with 16 feet of pavement width. If approved, the developer will be required to install a right-turn lane into the development on Glasgow Road. And Loving Road will also have to be resurfaced from the access point on Loving Road to Goshen Church North Road, which is the road to the east, actually you can't see it on the aerial. It's this road right here, that's Goshen Church North Road. And asphalt shoulders shall also be installed within the same area. Looking at natural features, a significant portion of the perimeter of the development area contains mature tree lines. Proposed development plan condition seven requires the developer make reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees not existing within building envelopes, areas of utility placement, roadways, or driveways. Staff suggested that the applicants further consider a requirement to preserve the perimeter tree lines as a majority of the existing mature vegetation is located within these areas. This was not addressed by the applicants. Prime farmland, we have noted that roughly 60% of the development area is classified as farmland of statewide importance. The application complies with a majority of the criteria evaluated for site characteristics review with considerations noted regarding the front building setback along Glasgow Road and preservation of perimeter tree lines. Looking under the site design and compatibility review, surrounding density within a quarter of a mile, the median is 0.43 dwelling units per acre. Within a half mile, the median is 0.20 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density is 3.61 dwelling units per acre, which is over eight times the median density within a quarter of a mile and 18 times the median density within a half mile. On page four, we'll touch on the building materials review. Within a half mile, fronting either Goshen Church, North Road, and Loving Road or Glasgow Road, 48% of homes have brick exteriors, 34% have vinyl exteriors. The remaining homes are a mix of aluminum siding, wood, stone, and metal. 56% of homes have brick foundations, 28% have plain-faced block foundations. And the remaining foundations are a mix of stone, split-faced block, post-impure, and poured concrete. There is no limit on the amount of vinyl that can be utilized for the proposed homes and foundations may include split-faced block. Looking at proposed open space, the maximum allowable lot coverage in the RS1D zone is 75%, meaning that 25% of each lot in the development will remain as open space. Staff suggested that the applicants consider and- Staff suggested that the applicants consider installing sidewalks on both sides of the new internal streets. The applicants did not agree to this, nor are they planning on any additional open space within the development. Uh, the Planning Commission should determine if the proposed development, including the proposed density, building materials, foundation materials, and open space, is compatible with the surrounding area. Section three-one-four of the zoning ordinance outlines the requirements for a traffic impact study. The transportation agencies did not require a traffic impact study in lieu of the following improvements. I referenced these earlier. Again, uh, there would be a turn lane requirement, a right turn lane into the development on Glasgow Road. That requirement was imposed by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. And the Warren County Public Works Department is requiring that Loving Road be resurfaced from the access point on Loving Road to Goshen Church North Road, and asphalt shoulders shall be installed within the same area. And the applicants did agree to these requirements. Looking at the development plan conditions, the maximum number of lots proposed for this development is two hundred and thirteen. The minimum home size proposed for this development is twelve hundred square feet, exclusive of porches or garages. Number three requires of a, requires a minimum of a one-car attached garage. Four limits building height to two stories. Five outlines permitted building materials. Six outlines, uh, utility placement and streetlights. Seven looks at tree preservation and does require a minimum of two trees be planted per lot. Eight looks at those transportation-related improvements. Nine imposes a requirement that the side and rear facades of any homes on lots immediately adjacent to Glasgow Road and Loving Road shall be screened via a landscape buffer no less than ten feet in width, comprised of no less than six evergreen trees and three deciduous trees per one hundred linear feet. Ten includes considerations for sinkholes and wetlands. Eleven requires that the developer coordinate fire hydrant placement with the fire department. And number twelve, uh, that's more of a housekeeping item. The proposed general development plan meets some of the review criteria assessed in the review process, with considerations noted regarding the front building setback on Glasgow Road, preservation of perimeter tree lines, density, building materials, foundation materials, and open space. Compatibility should be determined by the Planning Commission. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, there are a few items for your consideration, the first being LU one point, one point one and one point, one point two, which look at the future land use map, and one point, one point three, which looks at compatibility. The proposal may comply with LU two and two point one, which look at quality of development and character of the area. The proposal does not comply with LU two point, one point one, as the applicants did not agree to provide any additional open space in the development. Uh, the minimum open space in the RS one D zone is twenty-five percent per lot. And the Planning Commission should determine if this is adequate and usable and of scenic or ecological value. The Planning Commission should determine compliance with LU two point, one point four, PR one point seven, and NCR one point, one point six, which look at preservation of existing vegetation. And last, uh, on page six, NCR two four, the Planning Commission should determine the impact of the first sewer development in this part of Warren County on the existing rural character along Glasgow Road and Loving Road, and if the application complies with this item. On page seven, we have a few others, HN one and HN one point three. The Planning Commission should consider if the proposal is a suitable infill project, including the proposed density, lot sizes, and front sill, front building setback along Glasgow Road, and its impact to the existing character and pattern of development in the area. And last, HN two point one and HN four, the Planning Commission should determine if the location is suitable for the proposed housing type, and the, if the proposed development will enhance the array of housing options in the area. With that, I'll touch on our points to consider. Back on page one. Uh, the first, uh, being the proposed density of three point six one compared with the median densities of eight times, uh, the median density in a quarter of a mile and eighteen times within a half mile. Number two, uh, looking at building materials, roughly forty-eight percent of homes in the area have brick exteriors, and fifty-six percent of the homes in the area have brick foundations. There is no limit on the amount of vinyl that can be utilized for the proposed homes, and foundations may include split-face block. Third, there are no pedestrian or bicycle facilities located in the area, nor are there any nearby parks that will be accessible to the residents of the proposed development. The subdivision regulations only require sidewalks on one side of the street. Next, the nearest home to the east on Glasgow Road is set back around one hundred feet from the front property line. The required setback in the proposed RS one D zone is twenty-five feet. And last, the applicants agreed to make reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees outside of building envelopes, areas of utility placement, roadways, and driveways, but a majority of the existing mature vegetation is located around the perimeter of the development and outside of these areas. That is all for the staff report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Uh, commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurd?
Rachel, so if I'm looking at your staff notes, is it fair to say you guys suggested a hundred and fifty-three lots with a two point five nine density?
That was not our suggestion. That's just when we met initially, and we were asking questions about what was proposed in this location. We were just jotting down the notes as they, the applicant was explaining their pro- uh, project during that pre-application meeting.
So, so Rachel, a couple of questions, if I may. Um, one, this is, this one's kind of unique. Um, is there anything in, uh, in the comprehensive plan that addresses how we should, um, how she, how we should view the impact of a development when it is going from industrial to residential? Uh, is that a, is that considered a downzoning, or, or is there any criteria for us to judge that?
I don't know that there's specific criteria in the comprehensive plan, um, but it would be fair to say that the future land use map amendment would be reducing the amount of industrial land on the future land use map. So you all may weigh that differently.
So, uh, so I, I think I, I understand what you're suggesting, but I want to state it back, uh, primarily from my own feeble mind. Uh, we should consider whether we are reducing, um, industrial property that is set aside for that use?
Potentially, and I think if we go back to the future land use map, um, it's a very broad area. This is kind of on the edge. So it's not uncommon where there, there might be areas on the fringe where, you know, there's not, there is a line in the sand, but...
Sure, sure. Understood. And, and my, uh, the other couple of questions, the reason there's a difference in these two acreages is only a portion of this gets a, gets a, a change?
Right, because a portion, um, is mixed-use commercial already, and that future land use category would say that, uh, single-family residential zoning of, of the RS one D style may be appropriate in that particular location. But on the flip side, the industrial future land use designation would say that residential uses of any kind are not potentially compatible. So that's why they've applied to amend the future land use map only for that industrial part.
See, okay. And, uh, the last part is, um, regarding open space and sidewalks. So, uh, would it be accurate to say they've met the, the minimum, uh, but the staff asked for sidewalks on both sides?
Yes, so they've met the minimum, well, just because they have to. With the proposed RS one D zone, each lot would have to have a minimum of twenty-five percent open space, just per the ordinance, and same with the sidewalk requirement and the subdivision regulations, they would have to be installed on at least one side of the street. But I think we had also noted that there's not really any parks or open space areas that would be accessible to residents in this neighborhood by way of a pedestrian connection or anything like that. And so, uh, we had suggested that they maybe consider including some open space, uh, amenities, or potentially sidewalks on both sides of the streets for the residents.
See, so, so the sidewalks was kind of a, a suggestion among those other possible suggestions as well for open space. Very good. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
You pull your microphone down.
Would you point out for me where the mixed-use commercial development would be on the map?
Yes, it's this, uh, I don't know what you call this, salmon color, burnt red, this area here.
And then the, the lots for the houses would be, could be in that same area plus the extension?
So the green boundary is the, the proposed application boundary? And so the, the proposed homes would be in this area, and if the future land use map amendment for this area is approved, then those, that area could be rezoned potentially also for residential.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Rachel?
This question may be redundant to what Mr. Graham just asked, but I understood you earlier to say the applicant did not propose additional open space. Is there a minimum of open space required for this size of project?
It's just based on each individual lot as it's developed, and the minimum is twenty-five percent per lot.
So they've met that from a coverage perspective, is that correct?
Well, it, it would be reviewed with each permit for each lot, based on home size, driveway size.
Got it. Yeah, very good.
Things like that.
Commissioners, any other questions? Ms. Hurd, thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Uh, is the applicant or their representative here tonight?
Good evening. Chris Davenport, nine twenty-one College Street, and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
Um, I'm here on behalf of, uh, CNT Investments. Those are brothers, Chris and Tim Gravel, who I was sitting between, so, uh, they'll be on hand here tonight if you have any questions of them, or we need to sort anything out. Let me first, um, a couple of things I want to get out of the way. Late last week, their engineer, American engineers, had to redesign this just a bit because initially they did not show some stub streets. Rachel, is this the one that was emailed? Okay. So this new concept includes the stub streets, and when the engineers did that, they also found that I think one of the, there was some travel way that maybe they thought encroached upon a neighbor. So they had to change their, their, their boundaries a little bit, and it resulted in a loss of some lots. So it went down to one eighty-five. So the first thing I want to do is to amend that DPC to reflect that concept, and that would be in Development Condition Number One, taking two thirteen out and putting in one eighty-five. By my math, that brings the density to three point one three units an acre. The other thing I'm going to add is, uh, based upon the report that we got, and basically what Rachel has said tonight, is that in DPC number, let's put it at the end of six, the development shall include a sidewalk on each side of the street, period. So, uh, the way I kind of look at this application, there's probably three things I think you all are going to want to talk about. You've already talked about probably all three of them, or at least two of them. One is the flume amendment. So when we look at the flume, right there. So, uh, Ms. Ritchie, you were asking about the, what is currently mixed-use commercial. So about thirty of these acres is currently mixed-use commercial. The other twenty-nine is industrial. I would call that a downfluming, if that's such a thing. Uh, it is moving to a less intense flume classification. But what I really want to point out about that is this is basically a buffer, a transition area, uh, between the vast amount of industrial flume properties, and then pretty quickly it moves into low density. And so that's going to tie into the next concern, or the next topic I know is going to be discussed, and that's density. Page two of the staff report contains a sentence, and Rachel talked about this. This is the first, um, projected or proposed sewered development in this area. And, uh, you commissioners know, when you see the first post-sewer developments in an area that has not previously been developed on sewer, that's when you get these, what, what some would call drastic variances in densities. We've seen it in Rich Pond, we have seen it in Plano, we have seen it in Albaton, and I guess tonight we're starting to see it in the north part of the county. I would submit to you, that's not all a bad thing. Uh, and the reason I would submit that to you is, given our housing need that we have, uh, density is one side of that coin. That's one way you address housing need and inventory. The other thing I'd point out is, I don't think this is a bad spot I would submit to you for a higher-density single-family residential development because of the, what I just told you. This is, these are properties that are boarding, bordering a transition from industrial flume properties to low density. And how are we going to buffer those? Um, so it, it's probably not often you see a property owner that's wanting to put, um, those developments in those transition zones, but I guess someone's got to do it, and the Gravel brothers are here tonight asking to do that. The other thing I think will be a discussion point that I want to address is basically the, the square footage, the materials, those things. So, um, you've had two applications tonight that were vinyl. I, I would like to say that I listened to all those presentations with great detail. I would be fibbing if I said that, and I've taken an oath, so I'm not going to say that. But I do know in this report, a majority of the homes in this area are not brick. A majority of the homes in this area, um, or at least a high percentage of them, have block foundations. Uh, now with that said, uh, the other DPC that I'm going to add somewhat out of the gate here will be in number five, and I will say in the last sentence, neither plain-faced block nor split-face block shall be utilized for foundations. So in talking with my clients back here, anticipating some of the, the concessions you all might want, that's one they're willing to make. That does leave vinyl. I've, I've, as I've mentioned, the staff report mentions the majority of homes in the area are vinyl.
Now, Chris, on, on page...
Am I rounding down?
Yes, on, on, on the front, front page, roughly forty-eight percent of the homes in the area have brick exteriors.
Excuse me. What I meant to say is, uh, more than half don't have brick. And the reason I say that is, we don't know exactly what the other fifty-two are comprised of. I'm sure most of them are vinyl, but that would also include, for, I think, aluminum, wood, and I would, and other types of materials. So let me, let me clarify that statement. Also, I think most of the homes, if I remember, don't have garages. This development would have a one-car garage. Make sure I've got that straight.
Would, would staff verify that for us, just to make sure?
Fifty-nine percent do not have garage or carport.
Yeah. So, um, I, I mean, obviously, the goal here is, is an RS one D development with a certain price point for introductory homes. A lot of times when I'm here with multifamily, uh, projects, people clamor for projects like this. And they say, why don't you build single-family homes like this to help, to address the housing need in a certain, uh, price point or demographic? And then oftentimes when I'm here with these types of presentations, they say, why don't you make this a sixteen-hundred-square-foot home? Or, or why don't you make this a brick on an acre? Those are just different products. So you will have to decide, and it's, it's a job I do not envy, whether this is a, a proper place for a development like this. All I will say is this, as a guiding principle, your flume says it is, at least from an RS one D and a density standpoint, because the density that we're asking for is well within RS one D. So, and the law, obviously, the law says we have to conform to that. So that's, that's what I wanted to highlight. Oh, a couple more things I do want to mention. Uh, Rachel did mention that, and I guess I'll, I'll have a little bit of a disagreement with Rachel on this, about the tree issue. So if you look at what we offered, it says all reasonable efforts will be made to maintain all healthy and mature trees not existing in building envelopes or utility placements. And what the staff has pointed out is, most of the trees on this property are on the perimeter. What, what I'm trying to suggest to you is, I believe by my client saying they, they take all reasonable steps to maintain healthy and mature trees, uh, in all areas that are in envelopes and utilities, I believe it's more stringent than just saying they're going to keep the ones that are on the perimeter. And the reason I say that is, we all know building envelopes and utility placement won't be on the perimeter. Uh, so, maybe in the future, I... So maybe in the future, maybe I'll try to adopt some more of what you're telling me to. But I would say for tonight's purposes, I think that we've addressed that, because you're not going to build anything outside the setbacks. So you can't build along the perimeter anyways. You're not going to run your utilities along the back of the lots. So those trees would have to be maintained anyways. The other thing she mentioned is the setbacks along Glasgow Road. I would tell you, I would submit to you, this is, again, when you're going from a, when houses that were built, or properties that were built off of sewer with septic systems, necessarily larger lots, you're going to have a discrepancy in your setbacks with post-sewer developments. The way we've addressed that, most of the developments I've been involved in, is through a buffering, which we have included here. So there, I think on our concept, there'll be exactly two lots along the frontages of either Loving or Glasgow Road that will need to be buffered through the deciduous and the evergreen trees, the landscape buffer. So I think that's pretty commonplace, and we have included that in our DPCs.
Chris, listen, go ahead, Christian.
No, go ahead.
Let's address development plan condition number five. It's a wide-open concept. You've agreed to brick foundations. What percentage are you all willing to agree to? Because it's, there's no percentages of anything.
On vinyl.
So I would be open to, you know, some flexibility here, other than 100% vinyl. So if it's every so many houses, if it's a percentage, if it's something other than 100% vinyl, so if you would...
I'll tell you, I haven't been authorized with any cards laid down on that. I'll need to talk to them. I will share with you, one concern I've had, one discussion we have had, is that I know from a staff standpoint, sometimes we say that no more than so many homes will be vinyl. That gets difficult if you're selling lots. So, of the building, is what you're...
I'd offer you that flexibility, but I do understand, a percentage is a much cleaner-cut agreement to make. That way you know you've got it.
I will need to speak with them about that.
Before you speak to regarding the square footage, and the other two applications, we had it at 1,300 square feet instead of the 1,200. That way you get all your questions for them at once.
Ms. Vitale, I'll discuss that with them, too.
With regard to density, Chris, you know, I'll concede that arguably this is a downzoning. And I know we do need housing, and we do need density. I think if we could address those appearance things, that would get us, at least it would get me much further down the road.
Yes, sir.
Christian, you going to say something?
No, I was going to address the same thing you did, Dean. I mean, I think from a, you know, and I hate to say one thing we'd have talked about tonight, you can't compare everything the same, but I think this maybe hurts you guys a little more, is there's a difference in five houses and 185 houses. So from my standpoint, you know, it's probably more than just the front of the house. I mean, you know, the houses y'all are building, around 48% of them are brick houses. And so I'll just be interested to see what you guys come back with.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. On item nine, related to the facade, as far as the landscape buffer, reducing it from 213 to 185, does that impact the number of evergreens and...
Sure.
That stays the same?
It'll be the same. That's basically per lot. So, per 100 feet on lot. So that's just your buffer that will be along those two roads, because our plans call for, obviously, all the homes will use internal streets. So at the end of the development, those two homes won't be able to face those roads. So we'll have to buffer those.
Number nine would stay the same.
Stay the same, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Davenport, you've got two more minutes left, so we're going to... Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Davenport before he talks with his clients?
Oh, I am. Look at me. I see it every morning. And president of the work club. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, a good year.
Do you mind if I quote that? Tell them. So you all know that Ben's under the weather.
Yes.
He has texted Rachel and said this, and I'm the worst offender. He can't hear the questions that are being asked, and he can't hear the votes that are being cast. So what's that? Well, if he were...
So Hamp, I think what you're asking...
So I think what you're asking is that we pull the microphone in front of us when we talk...
I was thinking to myself first and foremost. I've been down in the Warren Circuit Court with Steve Allen Wilson this past, this week, sir. Yeah, but the problem with Judge Wilson, better be careful what I say. But you know, he's been a rock star for a good part of his life, and his hearing reflects it. So, yes, yeah, it is. So he is very sensitive to making sure everybody gets heard, keeps their mics on, keeps their lavaliers on, and that sort of thing.
He's hearing everything you say.
He's watching.
I've spoken with my clients, and they can offer this development condition, and they're willing to do so. In number five, I would add a sentence that no less than 25% of each home's exterior facade shall be constructed of either brick, stone, drive-it, LP smart siding, man-made stone, or other cement-based siding, period. No fewer than 20 homes shall have vinyl siding in soffits only. And so what that would mean is, every home would have at least a brick, hardy board, cement-based, or LP smart side front. There'll be no less than 20 homes in the development that will be completely constructed of either brick, hardy board, cement-based siding, or LP smart siding. In those homes, vinyl siding would be allowed in soffits only. And the way I think, in talking with my clients, they'll achieve that if the lots are sold, is through restrictions when it's platted, that certain lots will be designated as being those homes in which vinyl is allowed in soffits only. That guarantees that no home is completely vinyl, and it also guarantees a mix of exterior facades in the development, where there would be some homes that have no vinyl, except in the soffits. You agree that that's the impact? I guess I don't really need to ask Mr. Moore, but I want to make sure that that's clear from adding the two sentences. That would be my interpretation. And the square footage, we would move to 1,300.
And dual sidewalks, correct?
Correct, along with those other revisions I already mentioned. And whenever the time's right, I'll have Mr. Gravel come up and swear to those.
So just for clarity, and Hamp, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but could we run through the list of amendments we have made and agreed to?
DPC number one, amend... Thank you. DPC number one amends the number 243 to 185. DPC number two amends 1,200 square feet to 1,300 square feet. DPC number five says that there shall be no plain or split-faced block foundations in the development.
May I interrupt right there?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure what the intent was there, but I guess my question would be, other than brick or stone on the foundation, what other possibility is there?
I don't know, and I'm happy to add another sentence that says all foundations shall be brick.
Let's do that.
Yeah. I think, thank for the last few applications I've had with just both.
I think that was your intent, it was just a wording thing.
I'm not sure I understood the other two amendments, but what I wrote down was that 25% of each home...
Less.
I'm sorry. No less than 25% of each home constructed in the development shall be constructed of brick, stone, drive-it, LP smart siding, or other modern mason, masonry material. And then, no fewer than 20%...
20 homes.
No fewer than 20 homes shall be constructed with any vinyl other than that for soffits.
So I think what I intended to say, if I didn't say it, was that no less than 25% of each home's exterior facade shall be constructed of, and then it's all those materials without vinyl.
You say facade, do you mean the front facade?
All facades.
All four facades.
50% of the exterior facade.
Now, the front facade is where the brick, stone, or hardy will go, don't get me wrong. They're going to have a hard time selling homes if it's the side.
If they brick the back of them, yeah.
It's going to be a tough sell.
Right.
But no less than 25% of each and every home shall have a facade other than vinyl, and of the ones we've mentioned, which are basically the cement-based and the LP smart. And then, no fewer than 20 homes shall utilize vinyl only in soffits. Those are what I'm going to call your completely brick or completely hardy board homes. They won't have any vinyl except for under the soffits. And my client thinks that also helps to break up some of the monotony in the development, too. So, and again, the way I think conceivably they can do that is through the plat restriction. That way, if a lot's sold, whoever buys that lot knows whether, exactly what the condition is on it.
Finally, sidewalks shall be constructed on both sides of all interior streets.
Right, and that is on...
DPC number five, I think is the way you called it.
I think I put on six, split the street lighting.
Sorry, you're right.
And I think that's all of them.
Commissioners, we've heard the amendments. Do you all have any other questions for Mr. Davenport before we call his clients up to approve these amendments? Mr. Davenport, if you'll call. Name and address, please, sir.
Chris Gravel, 2796 Hunts Bend Road, Bowling Green, Kentucky, 42103.
Swear to tell the truth...
I do.
You've heard the amendments that you and your counsel have proposed, and Mr. Moore has read. Do you agree to those?
Yes, sir, I do. I do agree.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question regarding this potential application tonight? Yes, ma'am, if you'll come to the microphone, please. Could you take your mask off so we could hear you?
My name is Kiante Massey. I live at 899 Loving Road.
Yes, ma'am, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My question, I have a concern and a question. So my question first would be, when you're talking about coming in on Loving Road, are we making a turn lane in that area as well? Is it going to be widening on that road? Because I live at that house, and I have farm across the street. It's my parents' home. I'm purchasing that home, so I'm going to be the one living there. So it's just a concern, because here we have this property, and now it's like, all of this is coming along, taking it. So that's my concern. You know, regardless of what brother it is, it's the fact that we live there, and that's our area. I moved from the city to get away from a lot of people. So it's just a concern, but that's my question.
I think there was an amendment to this that we were going to make a turn lane on Loving. Explain it again, Rachel, please.
So when the transportation agencies reviewed the proposal, KYTC looked at the entrance on Glasgow Road, because Glasgow Road is a state-maintained road. And that's where the turn lane requirement comes into play, is on Glasgow Road, and that's a right turn lane in the development from Glasgow Road. Loving Road is a county road, and so the Warren County Public Works Director reviewed access to Loving Road, and is requiring that Loving Road be resurfaced from the access point to Goshen Church North Road, and that asphalt shoulders be installed within this same area.
So asphalt shoulders is, would that, would that be another way of saying it's going to be widened somewhat?
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
There's no specified width, but the shoulders would, in turn, make the road wider.
Got it, all right.
The entrance to the end, is that true?
To Goshen Church, is it Goshen Church?
On the backside of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
What was your other question? I'm sorry.
No, that was it. That was just my main question.
Just want to make sure we answered it.
No, you're fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there, is there anyone else that has a question regarding this application tonight? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I'm Brenda Martino, and I live at 685 North...
Pull your microphone, would you pull, I'm sorry.
I'm Brenda Martino, I live at 685 Goshen Church North Road, have been there for 38 years, and I do swear to... Have been there for thirty-eight years, and I do swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
Now, this subdivision is going to go to the back of the lots on Goshen Church Road, right? This subdivision.
Loving Road.
The way I understand it, it's gonna come in from Glasgow Road.
Correct.
And go over to Loving Road.
Yes, ma'am.
So, at that, it would be at the back of Goshen Church Road, right? Okay. Not all of it? How far?
Mr. Grable, would you come to the microphone, please? It's okay, it's just being recorded so everybody can hear it.
Does back up to Goshen Church, but not every lot backs up to this property. There are several properties that are larger tracts. So, there's a lot of lots along the front that are maybe, I know they're acre or less. I think some of them are probably, you know- We don't have a pond joining the back of us that I'm aware of, no, ma'am. But there's a lot of, there's several homes down through there, but there are probably, I'm gonna say half-acre lots, probably, you know, well before planning and zoning probably came into play, so. But there's many up down there that don't join our property whatsoever.
Okay, another question was if-
Would you come to the microphone so they, ask a question, please?
These lots that, in the subdivision, you said would have sewer. Okay. Would that sewer be accessible to the people on Goshen Church Road, too?
Probably not. This is, the sewer line would be developed only for this part.
Only for the subdivision.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought. All right, thank you.
Thank you, yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else in the audience that has a question regarding this proposal tonight? Yes, sir.
Hunt Strode, and I do swear to tell the truth.
Strode, your address?
Twenty-nine oh-one Glasgow Road.
Okay, thank you.
So, I just had a couple of things I wanted to, I guess some concerns, and unfortunately, I'm not well-spoken like their lawyer. But I've known Chris and Tim a while, they're great businessmen. They've done a lot for our community, and if you want to sell your property, no one's gonna get you more money. They're businessmen. This is a business decision. The human element, I think, is kind of being overlooked here. I still think that's a lot of homes per acre. My wife's family owned this property. We used to sled on it when it snowed, until some last sinkholes took our favorite hill away. So, it's not the level of property that you might have in mind. The map doesn't show you the hills and where the ponds develop when it rains. That's a concern, that many homes. How, if future sinkholes develop, how would you even get to them to treat them? It's not my business, but it's just a concern for the human element. One thing that is, another thing that I'm concerned about, there's roughly eleven hundred feet of width of this subdivision. Our property is seven hundred feet of that road frontage. Our neighbor, James and Penny Bond, who unfortunately just came down with COVID and cannot be here, asked me to also address this question. They have two-hundred-and-eighty-six feet of road frontage. So, the remaining hundred-and-thirty-ish feet of road frontage is all that this subdivision has for an entrance on the sixty-eight and eighty. And unfortunately, it's in a curve going down a grade. So, all of this traffic is gonna be, I shouldn't say all, I'm gonna envision most of the traffic is gonna be going to exit thirty or into Bowling Green, taking a left, coming out in a low spot. And there's a lot of traffic on sixty-eight already. I had a officer, he did a study this week for me, I knew there wasn't one done. He sat there for thirty minutes, and there was a hundred cars that went on sixty-eight, not during a factory outlet time and not during school. This was between one and two, one o'clock and one-thirty. So, it's a concern. I understand the right lane going in, but it's a concern when you only have about two-hundred feet of vision that you can see a car pulling out there. I'd like to see the state work maybe a little closer and look at this. But I definitely see the need. There is a growth in the county. So, out my back window, I'm gonna see all these houses. At our front window, we've got Tyson, so we're getting the squeeze. The one thing that I would like to have answered on record is that no utilities would be going across anyone's property but the owner of the property. No sewer, no, any utilities. It's all going across their hundred-and-thirty-ish feet of road frontage.
I think that is by law.
Okay.
And one other thing, Mr. Strode, the, addressing the water runoff, the developers and their architects and their engineers have to contain all that water. And if there is a sinkhole that comes up, that is the developer's job to fix that. So, thank you, Mr. Strode.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Is there any possibility of a privacy fence, or any kind of fence, to keep people on their property and not?
So, as I look at the, as I look at the map, the, I guess, their counsel makes a great point. If they weren't putting houses here, you might have another Tyson factory there. And by right, they wouldn't even have to ask. So, it's going to be in the developer's best interest to buffer as much as possible, but we have asked quite a bit of the developer tonight to make this as compatible for the neighbors as possible. A privacy fence might be a bit of a stretch, although I would expect that with their commitment to preserve as many trees along that tree line as possible, and then, and they've also committed to two trees per lot, usually, once those lots are built on, the owners will put in some kind of landscaping of their own. So, that may improve for you, although it's kind of hard for us to legislate that on a per-lot basis.
Understand.
Okay.
Thank you, yes, sir. Is there any other comments or questions that have not been addressed tonight? We've talked about traffic, water, density, the building materials. Are there any other questions in the audience tonight? Yes, sir, your name and address, please?
Eric Piccock. Normally, I'm at the North Pole, but I live at twenty-nine oh-eight Glasgow Road.
Okay. You swear to tell the truth?
I swear to tell the truth. My question is, where the entrance on Glasgow Road, where it's gonna be, as Mr. Strode talked about, there have been so many accidents right there in that curve. Are you, do you foresee the speed limit changing?
That would not, that would be not anything that we would take up tonight. That would be on the transportation cap, yeah, that's not something-
Something to look at, though.
So, we are, we're here to make a decision, but none of us are traffic engineers. So, we do rely on the traffic engineers that look at these proposals and make those suggestions that are included in the staff report before-
With all the traffic that's gonna be coming in and going out, they fly-
That's a great question for you to call.
They fly down that road.
That's a great question for you to call the transportation-
Yes, sir, I will be doing it.
And ask that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience tonight? I think we've addressed all of these. So, we appreciate everybody being here tonight and your input. So, our first motion is to, is the Flume Amendment, docket twenty-two fifteen Flume.
Make the motion to approve the proposed Future Land Use Map Amendment, docket number twenty-two fifteen Flume. Based on the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed Flume Amendment has met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU one-one-four in the comprehensive plan. Further, our requests this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel? Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Oh, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
There have been six votes cast in favor of the motion to approve the Flume Amendment. Four votes cast opposing it. So, the Flume Amendment application is approved.
Thank you. Our next motion would be the Zoning Map Amendment on twenty-two forty-six Z County.
Make a motion to approve the proposed Zoning Map Amendment, together with condition upon the general development plan, docket number twenty-two forty-six Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed Zoning Map Amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed Zoning Map Amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
No.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale? Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion passes, and we'll go to the Warren County Fisgell Court for a final hearing. Do we need to take a break, or we got just two more items? Y'all wanna keep going? Our next item tonight is twenty-two sixteen Flume. The estate of Deborah K. Howell and Larry Glenn Howell, care of David Gammon and Elizabeth Roddy, have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a tract of land containing approximately five acres located thirty-seven twenty H.E. Johnson Road from Ag to low-density residential. Should this future Flume pass, the estate, twenty-two forty-seven Z County, the estate of Deborah K. Howell and Larry Glenn Howell, care of David Gammon and Elizabeth Roddy, have filed an application to rezonate a tract of land containing five-point-five acres located thirty-seven twenty H.E. Johnson Road from Ag to RE residential state with the general development plan.
Chair Warren? We had a pre-application meeting on June the seventeenth for the property that you mentioned, and it is highlighted in yellow. The current zoning is agriculture. Current land use is agriculture. And the future land use is agriculture. The applicants are proposing to amend the flume from agriculture to low-density residential. And the applicants would like to rezone the property from agricultural to RE in order to divide the property into three single-family residential lots. And to note, the existing home is proposed to remain. The applicants have supplied the site plan there for your review. Looking at the future land use map category there, the applicants did provide a brief narrative in italics for you to review, and the planning commission should determine if the applicants have adequately addressed the criteria to amend the flume. Looking down at the site characteristics review, specifically the layout, lot sizes, and setbacks. The existing residence is set back approximately eighty feet from the front property line. The applicant has not imposed a similar requirement for a proposed Lot Three, which also fronts H.E. Johnson Road. The preliminary development plan also depicts three outbuildings, accessory structures on proposed Lot Two. The zoning ordinance does not permit standalone outbuildings, barns on properties owned RE without the existence of a primary residential structure. Such structures must be constructed in front, primary structure must be constructed in front of any outbuilding barn unless a waiver is obtained for that. The property will not be able to be subdivided as shown unless the outbuildings are removed or platted on the same lot with a current residence. Staff suggested that an alternative option to include a DPC that addresses removal of such structures within a specified time of the recrodation of the plot. However, this was not addressed by the applicants. Looking at the transportation infrastructure, the property has frontage on H.E. Johnson Road, which is a county maintain, a road with fifty feet of right-of-way and sixteen feet of pavement width. This road does not meet the current minimum county standards for acceptance or development. This application complies with majority of the items in the site characteristics review, with exceptions noted regarding the current sixteen-foot road width and the front yard setback, and the existing accessory buildings that are located on the proposed Lot Number Two. Looking down at site design and compatibility review, within a fourth of a mile, densities range from zero to point-nine-eight dwelling units per acre. And then, within a half-mile, densities range from zero to point-nine-eight dwelling units per acre. The proposed density is zero-point-five-nine dwelling units per acre for this proposed development. Looking at the surrounding architectural features, existing homes on lots fronting H.E. Johnson Road or adjacent to the subject property range from one to two stories in height, with a minimum home sizes ranging from one thousand ninety-two square feet to three thousand one hundred and fifteen-nine square feet. The applicants have proposed a minimum home size of one thousand eight hundred square feet for new residences, and a requirement that new developments incorporate a minimum of two-car garages. Looking at the building materials, existing homes on lots fronting H.E. Johnson Road, including the existing home or adjacent to the subject property, have exteriors composed of vinyl, wood, brick, stone, and modern masonry materials. Building foundations are mostly brick or stone, including the foundations for the current residence. The applicants have proposed similar material requirements. Building orientation, the building orientation of the existing home, existing homes in the area vary from mix of sod and front-facing facades. DPC number ten requires that any new home shall face H.E. Johnson Road or Claypool Boys Road. This application complies with the majority of the items regarding site design, and the planning commission should consider if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. Looking over at the development plan conditions, number one, any new lot created shall be a minimum of one-point-five acres. Again, number two addresses the minimum square footage of eighteen hundred square feet. Number three, all homes will have a minimum of two-car garage. Number four relates to the building materials. And no metal or wood siding will be permitted. Exposed foundations to be brick or stone. Number five, all utilities will be underground. Number six addresses vegetation preservation. Number seven addresses any sinkhole mitigation. Number eight addresses driveway access. And number nine addresses the septic system. Number ten, all residences shall be constructed to face the public street. And number eleven, no manufactured homes. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated fifteen items. The planning commission should determine if the applicants have provided sufficient evidence to support the proposed Flume Amendment, including the impact on the existing sixteen-foot roadway, and if the number of proposed lots is compatible with densities in the surrounding area. If the Flume Amendment to low-density residential is approved, the planning commission should determine that the proposal is compatible, including the proposed front yard setback along H.E. Johnson Road, and proposed zone change will comply with LU one-point-one-point-one, one-point-one-point-two, one-point-one-point-three, and one-point-one-point-four. The proposal may comply with LU two. The planning commission should determine if the proposal will result in high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. Looking at two-point-four and two-point-four-point-one, the planning commission should determine if the proposal complies with this. While the development is located in an area with sufficient water pressure to meet the minimum fire protection requirements, the current Flume designation for the property is agriculture with a proposed amendment to low-density residential. Furthermore, the current road width is only sixteen feet. As I mentioned before, this does not meet the current minimum county standards for acceptance or development. The planning commission should determine if the proposal will result in premature development and pressure on the countryside, and whether or not it will set a precedent for increased density, a greater number of smaller residential lots, loss of farmland, and loss of agricultural character in the vicinity. And lastly, the proposal should, may comply with H.N. two-point-one and- And lastly, the proposal should -- may comply with HN 2.1 and HN 4. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development is located in a suitable location and if it will enhance the array of housing options available in the area. Looking over to the points to consider, the planning commission should consider if the proposed Flume Amendment is compatible with the surrounding area, again, as proposed front yard setback, and if the applicants have adequately addressed the criteria. The current road width for H.E. Johnson is 16 feet. The existing residence is set back from the front yard, the front property line roughly 80 feet. The applicant has not imposed a similar requirement for proposed Lot III. The property will not be able to be subdivided as shown unless the outbuildings are removed or plotted on the same lot with a current residence. That is all we have for our staff report, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excuse me, thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions for the staff report?
Looks like there's a large development. I don't have the orientation here, but that comes in off of Scottsville Road. What development is that? I would pick the one thing we don't know for sure, huh? Or did I overlook it in the staff report?
Cross Creek.
Cross Creek, okay, very good. And is that a sewer development?
No, sir.
No, sir, all right, very good. All right, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
The applicant did not address the structures currently on the property.
That is correct. I think that there was a discussion with that, just pointing that out to them that those, you know, currently could not be as used, but that could be arranged, fixed when they go to repli it or do that sort of thing. So I think that that's something that can be remedied.
What's the minimum road width that should be for county acceptance?
I think Rachel mentioned earlier that this was, I think, 18 feet is the new standard, so I think Commissioner Starks had brought that up earlier.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant or their representative here tonight? Go ahead.
I'm already under oath?
Yes, sir.
I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. David Gammons is here. He's the co-administrator of the estate for the prior owners of this property. Do want to add a DPC to address the outbuildings and the barn on proposed Lot Number Two. Hamp, I think we put this as a Number 12. Current outbuildings on proposed Lot II shall be removed or a building permit issued for a primary residential structure within 12 months of recording of the plot. This is, just so you all are aware, this property is going to be auctioned, so that would allow someone bought this lot and this lot, they could still put a home, you know, here and then combine these later on if they wanted to without having to remove these structures. My guess is they're going to be removed no matter what whoever buys it, but that does give the owner now and any potential owner some flexibility to what to do with them and use the barn as storage potentially while they build.
And would you address, would you look at development plan condition number four? And it says building materials, which your clients have put down, there's no percentages of any type, could be, it's kind of wide open?
Ahead of me.
Oh, excuse me.
You're fine. So I think what we'll do here is add a second sentence after the first sentence handbat. Just add a new one. No vinyl shall be used on the front of any new residence.
I understand the intent, but we unintentionally do open up some possibilities that we would not want to invite. So if you would indulge me, could we say that the front facade would be LP smart siding, brick, stone, or other modern masonry material?
Like we did on the other one?
Yes, please, yes.
We can do that. The residence currently, I believe, is vinyl, is that right?
It's brick and the carport.
Carport's vinyl, that's right, that's right.
Questions for Mr. Bridgeman? Mr. Bridgeman, if you would have your applicant come to the stand, please, and agree to these plan conditions.
David Gammon, 326 Cedar Run Street, swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
Mr. Gammon, did you hear the additions to the development conditions and the amendments to those?
I agreed to all of it.
You agree to them?
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bridgeman. Is there anybody in the audience tonight that has a question regarding this application?
Commissioners, we call for a motion, please, on the Flume Amendment, and then we'll go to the zoning map amendment.
Make the motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 202216 Flume. Based on the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed Flume Amendment has met the directive to amend the Flume as outlined in LU 114 in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion to include the summary of evidence, testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel. Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Call for motion on the zoning map amendment, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with a condition upon the general development plan, docket number 202247Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion passes and goes to the Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Our last item tonight is 202248Z County. Elder Property Enterprises and Robert J. and Glenda Hurt have filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately 2.39 acres located at 312 and 362 Collet Road from RE Residential State to RS1C Single Family Residential with a general development plan.
Your chair, we had a pre-application meeting on June the 23rd for the property that you just discussed, and that is highlighted in yellow. The current zoning is RE. Current land use is single-family residential, and the future land use is low-density residential. And the applicants have supplied the following exhibit for you to review. The applicants are looking to develop the properties with a maximum of six single-family residential lots, and to note, the two existing homes are proposed to remain. Looking over at the site characteristics review, looking down at the wastewater, the proposed development is located within 2,000 feet of a public sewer and will connect to sewer if the application is approved. This application complies with majority of the site characteristics review criteria. Looking down at the site design and compatibility review, looking at surrounding densities, the proposed density for this development is 2.51 dwelling units per acre, which is similar to the existing densities for the adjacent sewer development. The approved density for the recently approved zone change that came before a few weeks ago at the corner of Colette and Vining is 3.89 dwelling units per acre. Looking at the surrounding architectural features, homes in the area are one to two stories in height. Minimum home sizes for nearby developments are Plano Estates, 1,700 square feet, the Vining's 1,300 square feet, and the RSD-1 parcels across the south side of Colette are 1,500 square feet. The majority of the homes have two-car attached garage, and the applicants included similar requirements for home size and garage requirements. Building materials review, the building materials for nearby developments include brick, stone, cementitious siding, and vinyl siding. Homes in the Vining's have concrete driveways, and homes fronting Colette Road have asphalt driveways. The applicants are proposing similar materials for homes, building foundations, and driveways. And proposed open space, the RS1C zone allows a maximum of 70% lot coverage. However, because the proposed lot sizes are larger in size than the typical RS1C lot, the applicants have agreed to a maximum lot coverage of 50%, and the application complies with majority of the review criteria assessed regarding the site design and compatibility. Looking down at area-specific policy review, the proposed development is located within the boundary of the Plano Focal Point Plan. Staff evaluated four applicable policies from this plan, and I'll just highlight a few of those for your consideration. PL1, a suitable development of vacant tracts and infill sites within the Plano community. The properties are designated low-density residential on the Flume. The proposed RS1C zone is not a potentially compatible zone designation in the low-density residential Flume category, but the proposed density falls within the allowable range in this category. The proposed RS1C zone may be appropriate if the planning commission determines that the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. Looking down to PL8, this addresses design materials. The applicants agreed in their DPCs that the exterior of each new residence shall be constructed of vinyl or brick, EFIS, stone, masonry, or other cementitious materials. Plain-faced and split-faced block will be prohibited as an external facade. All foundations will be brick, and the planning commission should determine compliance with this policy. And then looking at PL9, addresses vinyl. The applicants have not limited the amount of vinyl that can be utilized on the exterior of the proposed homes. The planning commission should determine compliance with this policy. So looking down at the development plan conditions, the property will be developed with a maximum number of six single-family building lots. Number two addresses any new access to be on Collet Road. Number three is the building materials. Number four, plain-faced and split-faced block will be prohibited as an external facade. Number five, all foundations will be brick. Number six is that all new homes will have two-car attached or detached garage. All homes will face Colette Road. Eight, each new building lot of record will have a minimum 40-foot front building setback And number six is lot coverage of 50%. Number 10 addresses driveway surfaces. Number 11, all utilities will be located underground. And number 12, the existing homes will be connected to the sanitary sewer system. Number 13 addresses tree preservation, and number 14 looks like the developer will plant two new trees on each new building lot of record at the time of the construction of the new residences. Looking over at the Focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 15 items. The proposal may comply with LU 2 and LU 2.1. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that will protect the character and pattern of development along Colette Road. The planning commission should determine if the proposal complies with LU 2.1.1. This action item encourages increased open space standards, and the applicants did agree to a maximum lot coverage of 50%. The proposal may comply with HN 2.1 and HN 4. The planning commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and if the proposed residences are to believe to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. Looking back to the points to consider, the application complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process. The proposed density for this development is 2.51 dwelling units per acre, which is similar to the densities for the nearby sewer developments, and the applicants have proposed to incorporate similar home sizes, building materials, foundation materials, and building setbacks as to what currently exists for nearby properties. That is all I have for the staff report. Would be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Commissioners, any questions?
So we included something in the staff report that said that they had similar materials, yet the DPCs do allow 100% vinyl. We'll ask the applicant in a moment if that's really their intent, but does a neighboring subdivision allow 100% vinyl?
Yes, and one of the existing homes on the lot is 100% vinyl.
Okay, and that most recent one that you alluded to, that was most recently approved, was the Vining's, was that 100% vinyl?
There are homes, I believe, in that subdivision, if my memory serves me correctly. I think we had the, let me look back. I think we have them in here.
You may have mentioned it, but I probably overlooked it.
Yeah, it was just a few.
In our building materials review, we've noted that permitted residential building materials for nearby developments include brick, stone, cementitious siding, and vinyl siding, and there weren't any percentages listed.
So they could or could not be 100%. They just, they do have that mix, correct?
Yes.
All right, very good. We'll ask the applicant. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Is the applicant or their representative here tonight?
Rodney McGahey, 2053, Dieford Road, swear to tell the truth.
Right.
Mr. McGahey, is it your intent to build 100% vinyl here?
Let me get one of the owners up here. The, when that was originally put in there, we matched what was existing in the surrounding area, but given everything that's happened tonight, we've kind of talked back and forth.
Okay.
Would you come up to the microphone, please, state your name, please, sir?
Jonathan Elder, 2223 Alton Green Hill Road, Bowling Green, Kentucky. Yes. So, you know, obviously, I guess the restriction, if you wanted to do 25%, that would be fine. Honestly, I'm probably not going to do at all vinyl, but I, you know, if we did 25% on the front, that way I don't have that restriction, I'd be good with that, but like I said, my intent at this time is probably to do 100% either brick or hardy.
Okay, but we just have to have something on the record, so whatever you decide to build above that is fine.
25% on the.
So we could do, and that 25% is sometimes misconstrued, so if you'll allow me to clarify that, how about if we say the front facade, that's the minimum, would be a LP smart siding, brick, stone, or other modern masonry material? Would that be agreeable to you?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good.
Can we clarify that would be for new homes constructed on the property? Just because one of the existing would not meet that.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
There's a, four new homes being built, two existing ones remain. Yes.
All right, commissioners, any other questions? All right, commissioners, any other questions?
Do we need, I'm sorry.
No.
Hamp, do we need to get agreement there, or do we need to address-
No, I just, if we have any other questions first, if there's none, then Mr. Moore will-
Thank you.
So hearing none of the questions, Mr. Moore, would you-
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Elder, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Did you heard us recite the changes to DPC, excuse me, to DPC number three, and it is your agreement that the front facade of all new homes constructed on this development shall consist of twenty-five percent LP smart siding, brick, stone, or other modern masonry material?
May I, may I interrupt? So it would not be twenty-five percent, it would just be the front facade?
Of course. Let me start over. The front facade of all new homes built on this development shall be constructed of LP smart siding, brick, stone, or other modern masonry material.
Yes, sir.
And that's your agreement?
Yes, sir.
And I don't believe we made any other changes.
That was the only change, mm-hmm.
Thank you, Rod. All right, commissioners, we'd call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with, and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-two forty-eight Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Before you take a vote, it's been pointed out to me that there are other owners, Robert and Glenda Hurt present.
Yes, sir.
Would you, Joe, that sounds like you, not Robert, would you come forward and tell us your name, address, and-
I'm Joe Hurt, fifteen eleven Larmont Mill Road, Alveton, Kentucky, and I do promise to tell the truth.
And you speak on behalf, at least as to this issue, I'd like to-
I, I will. Yeah, with her blessing, I will do on this issue, yes.
Can you hear us recite the restriction, amended restriction with regard to the front, I'm sorry, with regard to the front facade of these structures?
Yes.
And do you and Ms. Hurt agree to those?
Do.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
All right. McKenna?
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion approves, is approved, and will go to Warren County Fiscal Court. Is there any other discussion items for tonight? Hearing none, we stand adjourned, and we'll see everybody in August.